No, I don't think so.
We're just signing the confirmation. But you don't want that's.
She raised four, I had to make two.
Gentlemen, it is my pleasure to call two quarter this evening. Highland Park City Council get in person virtual regular meetings scheduled for today. Monday, October sixth and seventh P M.
Councilman Shafi.
Present.
Councilwoman Martin.
She's here, she's in the bathroom.
Councilwoman Manica. Council Proton Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, please take a moment to review the approved.
They can't hear you.
Please take a moment to review the proposed agenda. We'll take a couple of minutes here so we can allow Ms. Martin to join us. For those people who are online, we are experiencing some technical difficulties with our Zoom. Application tonight, so if you experience interference in the meeting or if at some point. The meeting drops, please try to relog back in. We will try and manage those. We will manage those challenges as they appear. Can you help me, Ms. Manica with the? You just reach out. Okay, so what is this?
An extension for the moratorium for the rental.
Okay.
Adding to the agenda.
So right, we haven't, we haven't had a motion yet, so let me read through and then you can go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Bostic, have you had? Been made aware, do you have a copy of this?
I was just handing a copy of it, Mr. President.
At seven oh four.
Congrats.
Do we have the ordinance officer online? Mr. Malone, are you here with us tonight? I want to make sure we add this to the agenda, I need to have Mr. Malone on the phone.
Do we, we got the result?
I see you, I see you, okay, so we have him. Okay, so City Council, you're, we are, we had, we are up right now. There's no guarantee that it's going to stay up because it's been crashing. Okay, Council, you have the agenda in front of you, the chair will entertain a motion on the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for Monday, October sixth, two thousand twenty five.
Chair offers support, questions, concerns or dissent? Madam Deputy Kirk, would you please call the role in the approval of the agenda?
Are we adding this item to the agenda before we approve it or not?
All I needed was someone to make a motion, I didn't, I didn't receive a motion. Ms. Manica made a motion.
Yeah, but to approve the agenda, she didn't make a motion to add it.
Correct.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to add.
Hold on a second, we, so Ms. Manica, considering the fact that Ms. Martin has delivered us a resolution, she would like to make a motion to add this to the agenda. Would you yield and allow her to add this to the agenda or would you have some objection to that?
Nope, I yield my position, my motion.
Chair withdraws support, go ahead, Ms. Martin.
I want to make a motion to add the moratorium resolution to under. City Council.
So what I need you to do is make a motion to approve the agenda with an amendment that would include adding the resolution that you provided to us.
Can I get, make, I want to make a motion to approve the agenda with adding the resolution that I just. amended the agenda that I just add the resolution.
Okay. Questions, concerns?
You asked Mr. Bostic about it.
I asked Mr. Bostic, he just received it, so now it's open for, as we debate this before we take a vote. The item in front of us, the moratorium, as, as it stands, the ordinance officer was here last week. And he made it clear that he hasn't been issuing any tickets at all. Okay, so with that being said, it, I just want to make sure that we address the fact that there are no tickets being. Applied, Mr. Malone will be here to, to speak for himself. So we have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Martin. Support was offered by Councilman Shafi that is to approve tonight's agenda with the adding of. A resolution. And that resolution is whereas the Highland Park City Council unanimously voted for a moratorium of enforcement on a rental ordinance that the council can review and make amendments for approximately ninety days on May nineteen twenty twenty five. And whereas Highland Park City Council held workshops to review the ordinance on June second, seventh and twenty first became to no verbal agreements or common understanding. A statement is not a statement of fact, whereas various members of the Highland Park City Council submitted questions to the McKenna Group without adequate or timely response and explanation and whereas the City of Highland Park City Council has not yet fully reviewed the existing ordinance and whereas the aggressive nature of the existing ordinance puts sudden and undue burden on many citizens of Highland Park risking many their lives and duly owned assets. And whereas the upcoming fall and winter holiday season exacerbate distress on families in the City of Highland Park. And whereas the recently read rental ordinance was not primarily authorized by a member of the Highland Park City Council in contravention to established norms and now therefore be resolved that the City of Highland Park Council affirms the countenance of and further extends a moratorium on the rental ordinance for at least one hundred and twenty days until the council can properly review and make amendments with no less than four workshop agendas dedicated to its review. With the representative of the McKenna Group in attendance, that is the addition that was asked for. The agenda, so now that we have the motion made by Councilman Martin, supported by Councilman Shafi, any other further questions, concerns, we'll take a vote.
Councilman Shafi. Councilwoman Martin, yes to add, Councilwoman Manica. Council Proton Robinson. Council President Thomas.
No, motion carries, so this item goes where?
City Council.
So it goes under.
Say what?
So it will go under Council Affairs. This is a city council initiated thing, so it goes under Council Affairs as item nine. Alright, so let's proceed with the agenda. First, we have the approval of the proposed minutes. So the chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the in-person and virtual regular meeting held on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the proposed minutes in person and virtual regular meeting, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Chair offer from Ms. Martin, questions, concerns or dissent? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Councilman Shafi. Councilwoman Martin, yes, Councilwoman Manica. Council Proton Robinson, Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries, I've been made aware by Mayor McDonald that she will not be attending tonight's meeting. I was also told that we would not have a report from a department head, so we will move forward to item four. And that is the opening of the bids for Ives Park. I'm sorry. So this is participation, I'm trying to go straight into the agenda, alright. So this is participation, so we have. One, two. Three, four items on the agenda. The bids for Ives Field Park renovations and playground, the second reading of the graffiti ordinance, the second reading of the non-owner occupied residential property registration and inspection. Resolution supporting House Bill forty five oh three and forty five oh four for the expansion of the Michigan State Historic Preservation Tax Credits. And at a recreation, a resolution to approve the gift of exercise equipment and swinging bench at Mumford Glendale Park from say Detroit. If you come to the podium and you have something that you wanted to add, it'll be on an agenda item, please make your way forward. I will start online, Mr. Anthony, you will be first. And I'm hoping that you're speaking on agenda items, that's what I have your hand up for.
Took my hand down, thank you.
No problem, sir. We'll move into the gallery. This is on agenda items, please.
Such a pleasure to come home. Let's see, ordinance second reading V I, regulation graffiti. So I'd love to volunteer my time with a sand blaster or some brick appropriate paint. I think it's easier to find a city-owned building that isn't covered in graffiti. So my telephone number is six five one two six nine seven one six six. If anybody would like to take me up on that and I think the only thing pertinent to that matter is there's a city-owned building. Let's say one block north of Hamilton and Puritan that's had some. I've just been too lazy to get to them, there are these lovely, you know, like Nazi-style propaganda posters, I tore them off of some Woodward Avenue buildings, but I haven't had the time to get over there off of Hamilton's, that would be on the west side, one block north of Puritan on beautiful Hamilton Avenue. I'll do a drive-by, let's say Friday and see if they're still up there. You'll be able to see them, there's like twelve, maybe fifteen of them, and they're laminated. Let's say, no, Puritan. One block north on the, on the west, yeah, going that way. But they're laminated, stapled, it's a headache, I'll try to get to it though, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else with the agenda? Excellent. Then we will move forward to item four. For bid opening. I think we all know the procedure for this process.
Bid opening for four, bid opening?
I'm sorry, number five. The chair entertain a motion.
For Ives Field Park renovations.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica, seconded by Councilwoman.
In the Ive Field Playground.
For the opening of the bids, would you please take a roll call, hold on that now.
Councilman Shafi.
Yes, to open the bids.
Councilwoman Martin, yes, Councilwoman Manica. Council Proton Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries, we'll open the bids, question for both of you, Mr. Bostic and Deputy Kirk, we got to go item by item, A and B? A and B, okay, thank you. So, it's your pleasure, ma'am.
But technically, some of them were submitted together, so.
So there's some overlap, so just want to make council aware, I thought that might be the case, that some of these bids would come in in combination. Would anyone have any issue with opening both sets of bids at the same time? Members of council.
He probably should just do.
Okay, so, recommendation from Mr. Bostic, we would, I would also be willing to entertain a motion for the opening of the bids for the playground as well, if someone would like to make a motion, we can get both of those open together, seeing as how they're going to come. Some of them are going to come packaged, so we could get a motion for opening of both bids.
I thought I.
You made a motion for.
I thought I included them.
Did you?
I said and.
And.
Ives Field Playground.
Yeah, you did, I saw her that.
I stand corrected, so thank you so much.
The first bid is from Sinclair Recreation, S I N C L A I R Recreation. One seven six East Lakewood Boulevard in Highland, Michigan. Sinclair Recreation, one seven six East Lakewood Boulevard in Highland, Michigan. And this, on the outside, they have Ives Field Playground. A bid bond is enclosed. Their bid information includes unit price. So for unit A. The price is two dollars seventy cent per square foot. Oh, that's earthwork, unit price A is for earthwork, that's two dollars and seventy cents per square foot. Unit two is for concrete containment curb. That's eighty dollars. Unit three is for fiber mulch. That's two dollars and ninety cent per square foot. Topsoil, two dollars per square foot. Lawn seed. Two dollars per square foot. For a total bid of one hundred five thousand dollars. The next bid is from Anglin Civil. A N G L I N Civil, C I V I L, Anglin Civil, A N G L I N. One three zero 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 Newburgh Road in Livonia. One three zero 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 Newburgh Road in Livonia. And this is for Ives Field Park renovations. Bid bond is enclosed. For earthwork. Three hundred ten dollars thirty seven cents. It has the initial C Y. For asphalt, six hundred twenty four dollars and six cent. For softball field backstop and foundations, eighty four thousand two hundred thirty eight dollars and ninety cents. Chain link fencing, three hundred ten dollars nineteen cent. Court surfacing. Five dollars. Seventy six, five dollars seventy six cent per square foot. Concrete walks, thirty three dollars thirteen cent per square foot, it does not give a total bid amount. The next bid is for Ives Field Park renovations and this is from W C I Contractors. W C I Contractors, thirty seven eighty two. Bellevue in Detroit. Thirty seven eighty two Bellevue in Detroit. A bid bond is enclosed. Earthwork, forty dollars C Y. Asphalt, four hundred dollars per ton. Softball field backstop and foundations, twenty four thousand L S. Chain link fencing. Ninety two dollars. I'm assuming linear fence, linear feet for L F, but I don't know. Court surfacing, three dollars seventy five cent per square foot. And concrete walks, eighteen dollars twenty five cent per square foot. Our last bid is from Mid States Recreation, Mid States, one word, Recreation. One two seven nine Hazelton, Etna Road Southwest from. Out of Ohio. Mid States Recreation, one two seven nine Hazelton, Etna Road Southwest out of Ohio.
Thank you, ma'am, having heard all the bids.
I got to open it.
Let's see, the last one.
Last one to open and read. This is for Ives Field Playground. Earthwork, sixty five dollars C Y. Concrete containment curb. Sixty eight dollars, sixty eight dollars seventy five cents L F. Fiber mulch, forty six. Fiber mulch, forty six dollars. Topsoil, sixty five dollars. Lawn seed, one dollar. Those are all the bids.
Okay, council haven't heard those bids. The chair will entertain a motion to close the bidding and refer those to the, the city administration for review.
I want to make a motion to close the bids and give the, um, bids to administration.
Second.
A motion on the floor by Councilwoman Martin, seconded by Councilwoman Ashafi, to close the biddings and refer to the city. Questions, concerns, dissent? Hearing none, if you'll be kind enough to call a roll call.
Council, Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica? Council Proton Robinson? Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries to bids will be referred to the city. Moving on to item six under ordinance. We have received the updates to the graffiti ordinance that were requested by Ms. Martin. We have, uh, had a second, a second reading or review for the non-owner occupied residential property registration and inspection ordinance. The chair will entertain a motion on item six A.
Six A, is that four A?
I'm sorry, six A.
For the graffiti, correct?
Six A is graffiti.
Okay. I want to make a motion to approve the ordinance for the graffiti, for the second reading?
Yep, we have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Martin, seconded by Councilwoman Manica for the graffiti ordinance. Questions, concerns, concerns or dissent?
Yeah, I got questions.
Go right ahead.
So you gave me a red line document for the rental ordinance, but you didn't give me a red line document to show me what was changing of graffiti ordinance. And if my memory serves me correctly, I didn't ask anything, Mr. Bosnick. Um, I, I, I got a red line.
Right.
For the rental ordinance.
Sure, can I respond?
Okay.
Just can.
I do, I have a red line for the graffiti. Now granted, I wasn't here for that first read. Y'all kinda, you kinda pissed me off and I left. But, uh, I still need a red line document for it to see what was changed.
Well, nothing was changed in the graffiti. There were changes to the, uh, rental ordinance that were requested by Councilperson Martin. Right, yeah, that, that was, uh, yeah, that was incorrect. Uh, it was the non-owner occupied ordinance.
So this is the original. There's nothing been changed from.
Correct, nothing other than the changes that we asked for three or four months ago.
I don't even, yeah, I don't even think, I don't believe there's any changes from the first read and the second reading.
All right.
There were some changes from the initial discussion to the first reading that were incorporated based on council discussion, but first to second reading, no changes.
Okay, all right, all right.
Okay.
If you're lying to me, I'll definitely find out.
Would you, uh, mind calling a roll on item six A, please?
Councilwoman Ashafi?
For the second read, right?
Yes. Or graffiti. I'm sorry?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries, moving on to item six B. See, council, what's your pleasure?
Are we going to read it?
Uh, no, you can't. This is the second reading. The updates were made that were, um, suggested by Ms. Martin. They're in this document.
Twice into the record though, Council President.
So you can go right ahead and read it, sir.
It's your ordinance?
No, no, sir, it's the city's ordinance.
No, sure, this is your ordinance. Y'all cooked this up on your own.
So I, I do have a question.
Go right ahead.
Um, we, don't we make a motion to start asking questions?
Are you, before, we have, we have to make a motion to approve it in order to get it out on the floor to discuss it? This is the document with the changes were added that you suggested.
Right, so now that their changes are made.
Hold on a second, Ms. Martin, let's get a motion and get it out for, for appropriate discussion. So we got either motion to approve it.
That's why I just asked.
So.
You're making a motion to ask questions, right?
I can't make, I can't make the motion. You can't. I can, I can support it. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, correct.
I would like to make a motion to approve the second reading with questions.
Yes, ma'am, so we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin. I offer my support. Ms. Martin, please go right ahead with your questions, I believe.
Okay, so my first question.
I'm sorry. So we're, we're done with the repeat. Okay, so we're moving on to item six B.
Hold on a second.
No, no.
Is, is, is this a second read or not?
Yeah.
Cause you read the first one. I wasn't here for it because I left. This has gotta be read again into the record.
I'll read it. I will read it. I'll read it. I didn't write it, but I'll read it.
Yeah, when y'all are gonna read it?
So before we move any further, I need someone, Mr. Bosnick, hold on a second. I need someone on city council to go into their computer, go into their documents and show me where, after it was read into the record, that it needs to be read again. I'll wait.
You got it listed on the agenda here as a second read.
It's the approval of a second reading.
It's supposed to be read by everybody in the city, though. Any ordinance that is being considered for law must be read into the record twice.
Correct.
You know this.
So I can't wait for you to read it, sir.
You sitting there like you don't know what the hell is going on.
Okay.
I'm sick of that.
Excuse me.
So you can go ahead and read it.
Point of order.
Point of order. If you're gonna insist.
Yeah, it's gotta be read.
Then you, then you can be the one to read it this time.
No, you're gonna read it because you're, you're gonna, you read it.
I don't recall writing this, sir.
Mr. Bosnick. You didn't write it because you shortened shit, didn't include that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
Please stop the profane.
Made by Councilwoman Martin, seconded by Councilwoman Manica for the approval of the ordinance. The modifications were made. We can call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Bosnick, my question is, um, with us making amendments, it doesn't have to be read, so the amendments are on the record? That's, it's a question.
Right. As far as, we're talking about the non-owner occupied, the rental ordinance?
Correct.
Right. The, uh, the amendments were made. It's up to the pleasure of council. Many, many communities don't literally read ordinances in the record. They just publish them, and that's considered publication for the community, so it can be aware. But I understand Highland Park's customary process is to read them in the record.
Hold on, Mr. Bosnick.
Pause, both of you, please pause. A vote was taken.
Right.
It's in the record. Item A has been approved. We're on to item B.
We're on item B.
I'm, I'm not talking about item A.
Right.
Talking about item A.
I'm talking about item B.
Item B.
Okay, so we have a motion made by you, supported by the chair.
Right, and then I said support with questions.
Right.
And those questions, go right ahead. So the floor is still yours.
Okay.
This outburst, the, the floor is still yours, ma'am.
Okay.
Is, is the question whether the new changes that were made need to be literally read into the record?
Correct.
That's, that's a, it's a council decision.
That's a council decision.
But a- as published, those changes that you asked for at the last meeting have been incorporated into this document. I believe there's also one more paragraph that was added. Um, but other than that, everything, all the red lines are those that were discussed at the last council meeting.
Okay, so my next question, Mr. Bosnick, is this, if I don't see all the suggestions or the amended suggestions that were made in here, because I remember you saying our last meeting, you said that we do amendments between the first and second reading.
Right.
Okay, so my question is, I don't see everything that I suggested in here.
Okay.
So.
Tell us what's missing, please.
Okay, so I don't see.
I'm sorry, point of information?
Yes, ma'am.
We can only discuss A currently. We have not moved to B.
No, no, we, we voted on, we voted on graffiti.
We're only on the graffiti.
Yes.
Didn't we?
No, Councilwoman Martin moved to approve graffiti. Councilwoman Manica seconded. We took the vote. Councilmember, Councilman Ashafi said no. Councilwoman Martin said yes. Councilwoman Manica said yes. Council Proton Robinson said no. Council Proton, Council President Thomas said yes. It's, you've approved the second reading. We're done with A.
With the graffiti, right.
Yeah.
Now we're on B.
How come with it?
So, so, so to answer your question, if there are things that you want in here that are not in here, then you would take that into consideration when you're voting, whether to approve the second reading or not. We, we did our best to pick up all the suggestions and comments that were made based on a view of the, uh, video of the meeting and the notes that were taken. There's other things.
So then my, my, my next question is, so when you said that we could do this by the first and second, what did you exactly mean by that?
That at the first, the first reading, the ordinance was written in the record.
You read it twice. You read it twice.
Actually, it was read twice. Um, you, you wanted, you requested some changes.
One was not approved and one was.
So.
To be read.
Those changes were made. They were spelled out in red line, underlining the new things that are in and striking out the thing, a couple lines that were taken out. Um, so I, I guess, I guess I'm, we, we did our best to accommodate you and make all the changes that you requested. If there's other changes that you want, uh, that you feel have to be part of it, then I guess you would take that into consideration when you're vote tonight, whether to approve the second reading or not.
Ms. Martin.
Okay, good enough said. I got it. Okay.
All the changes that have been instituted were, you were driving that bus.
Yeah, they're not all in here, but it's okay, because I, I did relook at the, the video and everything like that, and I reread it and I looked at the amended, but okay.
So, uh, we're going, going to take a roll call vote on item six B. This is the,
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Martin, supported by the chair.
I have questions at the times.
Would you like to voice those?
Absolutely. So on, um, on the amended, I want to say this is, uh, page two. At the so-called, uh, table of contents. Under dwelling or non-owner occupied units, you state the following. You say, any non-occupied structure or part of the structure, in the case of multiple family structures, contain one or more rooms, including the kitchen, and designated as a unit for occup- excuse me, for occupancy by one family for the purposes of cooking, living, and sleeping, which is used as a home or residence by a person or homeowner unit, or any grounds or other facilities or areas promised for the use of a residential tenant, whether for any form of compensation or not, including without limit apartment units and one and two family dwellings. A unit that is rented or leased with an option to purchase is considered a rental agreement until the leasing fully exercises the options to purchase as evidenced by a recorded deed or land contract. Did that make sense to anybody here?
Uh, let me, you know what, let me read. This is under definitions. I'll read it again. A dwelling or non-owner occupied.
Does that make sense to y'all?
Listen, let, so let's, so let's read it again.
So all I'm simply saying is, I don't, I don't need your input there.
That's fine.
The Council President, I've noticed that in this ordinance, y'all did a very large.
Let's look up the word.
Brushing of this ordinance, okay? A lot of this stuff makes no sense. This one here, dwellings or non-occupied units makes no freaking sense whatsoever. Okay, and you can try to spin it and twist it however you see fit. I just read it just like you got it, and it's so convoluted, it makes no sense to nobody, but you. So clearly, you had a hand in writing.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Um, this will be my last question. In the rental ordinance, how come there's no, like, timelines?
For?
Just, there's different parts in there. There's no timeline. Like, is there a checklist?
For?
For the code enforcer.
Timeline for what?
Timeline, there's just different things in the, I mean, because we're not going through it, right?
Uh, no, ma'am, I'm, I'm trying to get, is there a timeline for?
There's like no timelines for like the lock, is it the lockout? It's, if, if they can't get into the inspection once, then it's just a lockout. Like, there's no, like, after, uh, two or three attempts.
No, ma'am, if you schedule an appointment with the inspector and you don't show up, whatever that looks like.
Yeah, but it's not even that they don't show up. It is, just because a specter, the, if code enforcer shows up, it doesn't mean that they didn't show up.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. You know, it could be a, a three attempts, or, you know, you, when I talk about another timeline, like, hey, we'll be doing inspections between this time and this time. None of that's on there. Like, we can do this. And I did, and, let me put this out here, I did look at the Hamtramck one. They have an inspection for two years. It's not even inspection per year.
So let me, help me, help me understand it. Give me an idea, if we were gonna put timelines in.
I mean, okay, so.
Help me straight for me what these timelines would look like.
Are we gonna go through it?
No, I'm just saying, you're, you're making a statement, and it's, and I really want to understand the question that you're asking. Give me an idea of what.
Mr. President, it's in different, it's in different places. So even like inspection, um.
Be specific if you would.
But I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm about to go over that. So inspections are done between, there's no time. So when I say timeline, like, hey, inspections are done between uh, nine and two thirty, or ten and three, or Monday through Friday. Like, that's not in there.
I would assume it would be done during business hours.
We can't, well, we don't want to assume anything, right?
The city is only open during business hours.
We don't want to assume anything on, we don't want to assume anything on ordinance.
I mean, that's just a point of fact. The city is open during business hours. I don't see how we would be able to operate outside of business hours.
My next, my next, but still, if somebody's just sitting there all day long, even, even if we start at ten, we could open at nine. That doesn't mean that inspection is going to happen exactly at nine o'clock. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. I, I got cable. I got my gas fixed. I know what is, I know exactly what you're saying. So you set an appointment, and you're typically there for the appointment.
Well, when I, they do my cable, I only, it's two hours. They have two hour window. That's what they tell me.
So, so you would like for us to put a, a, a window in there as far, as far as your question?
Yes, a timeline. Yes. You know what I'm saying? I'm, so, I mean, are we going through the different changes? No?
If you'd like to.
Okay. Okay, before we go forward.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Manica.
I have a question.
Sure.
Ms. Martin?
Go ahead, uh, Ms. Manica, if you would, please.
Ms. Martin, when you say a timeline.
Then why, then why did you yield the floor to Ms. Martin if you weren't there?
So.
Because she started speaking, and I didn't want to be rude to the women in the room. That's why I used it.
Oh, wow. Okay, so what, what do you need, sir? What would you need from me?
Okay, so all I'm trying to say is I'd like to go through a couple more points on this ordinance.
Sure.
Okay, so, on, I believe this is, uh, page, because ain't nothing up here. I found that part. So page one, two, page three.
There are numbers at the bottom of the page, sir, right there.
No, no, there are not.
Uh, that's a number. It says page two, right there.
So, fourteen forty eight dash three. Registration requirements. Now tell me if this makes sense. The owner of any non-occupied dwelling or unit shall register with the city, shall designate a person as the responsible local agent who shall be legally responsible for operating the premises in compliance with all the provisions of the city code and ordinance, and shall also be responsible for providing access to the premises for making the inspections necessary to ensure compliance with the terms of all applicable codes and ordinances adopted by the city. Okay, you said the owners of any, I got a problem with that. If this is supposed to be a rental ordinance, why is the brush so fucking broad? Uh, pardon my language. I'm sorry for that. I did say I want to, because why is the brush stroke so broad? Why do you say any? You said any owner.
When you say who, why did who say?
Who wrote this?
This is written by the C D department, sir.
No, 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 he's not gonna put that on cards in them. Okay, so.
Okay, that's who, that's who presented this document, Community Economic Development.
All I'm simply saying, Council President, the brush is too broad.
Okay.
The strokes are too broad. You need to narrow the scope. Either this is a rental ordinance, or this is a slave registry for the residents of Highland Park. Which one is it going to be?
Not exactly sure.
Okay, you need to narrow the scope. Now, if you wanted to talk about the landlords who are doing rental properties, who may be slum lords, that's what this ordinance is supposed to be for. But so brush stroke is too broad. You say any owner occupancy. That could be me, you, anybody sitting in this room. And you do this in several places in this ordinance where you broadly brush.
So who, when you say you, who are you talking about?
You and whoever else helped you write this ordinance.
We all received this ordinance together.
Oh, sir, rebal. I'm, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that you had this ordinance long before I had it.
Uh, no, actually, I work a day job. You should try it. Come on, so, come on. So let's, let's keep going on. Let's keep going on. Come on, what else do you have for us, sir? Come on. Because we're gonna call the roll in a minute.
So under.
Okay.
Under fourteen forty eight, I want an amendment, I want A to be removed. Because it's too broad.
I want to make it on A.
You need to narrow the scope. E- either it's a rental ordinance, or it's a registry for all the residents in the city of Highland Park. You don't get to have it both ways. The scope must be narrow. You said rental ordinance. This is not a rental ordinance. So you need to narrow that. I want section A removed.
Anything else?
There's an amendment for section A, I want removed. There's amendment for section A. I want removed. I also want, um, also want on page uh, two. I want dwelling or non-occupied unit. I want that removed. Because it makes no sense.
It's, that, that section is a definition, sir. On, on page two, it says right there, one four four eight point zero two. I read it twice for the group. These are the definitions. She's asking for the removal of the definition.
It makes sense to you, but I just read it to the ordinance.
Okay.
And we were all like, huh?
Sure. Go right ahead. Anything else, sir?
Yeah, absolutely.
Keep going.
So. As I said, this ordinance is extremely intrusive. It reminds me of, of the, uh, of the slave registries that African Americans had to do to move around outside of the plantation. Is that what we're going with here, Mr. Biden?
Uh, there, sorry, point of information. Point of information.
I didn't ask for no interference.
I don't, I'm asking for your information. Please give us the rest of the places.
Bayla, have a conversation.
Point of information.
Let's be professional.
Point of information.
Madam clerk, call the roll on item six A, please. Madam clerk, please call the roll on item, I'm sorry, six B.
Okay, it seems like.
Please call the roll on item six B.
Councilman Ashafi.
Please call the roll on item six B.
Councilman Ashafi.
Call the roll on item six B, please. The roll is being called on item six B.
I still have the floor. I have a.
The roll is being called on item six B.
I still have the floor.
You do not, sir, I'm the chair of the meeting. Madam clerk, please call the roll on item six B.
Councilman Ashafi.
We are drowning in househand.
Start from the top, please.
We're drowning in househand.
Council President Thomas.
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
We're drowning in house.
Keep going. This is the, we're voting to either to approve or disapprove. Second, six B. The vote has, the vote has commenced. Would you please continue? Thank you.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council, uh, Councilwoman Martin, sorry, my apologies. Councilman Ashafi.
No.
Okay, you said, you did, I'm sorry, you didn't hear her.
She did say no.
I said no, but I said Martin first.
Okay, thank you. So the motion does not pass. Thank you. Let's move on to item seven under administration. This is the resolution. A resolution in support of House Bill forty-five oh three and forty-five oh four for the expansion of the Michigan State Historic Preservation Tax Credit established under Public Act three forty-three of twenty twenty. And before we do that, before we have any other miscommunications here, Michigan House Bill forty-five oh three and forty-five oh four from the hundred and third legislature proposing significant modifications to the Michigan Historic Preservation Tax Credit Program by raising the annual credit cap and introducing new provisions for accessing these credits for rehabilitating projects, including increasing benefits for various historic resource types. The bill so also requires the enactment of other of, of others to become effective. What this is actually doing across the state of Michigan, support of these two bills will increase historic tax credits for the owners of historic homes across the state of Michigan. That would include Highland Park, who has two historic districts. What this is asking for, this is a resolution in support of the bill. That's all this is. Every municipality across the state of Michigan, where they have historic property, has been sent the same letter and they're asking their city council to either vote yes to send a resolution that says we support increasing the tax credits for the historic homes in our city. That is what this resolution is. It does not ask for anything specific. It's asking for all of the municipalities in the city, I'm sorry, the state of Michigan, Ann Arbor, Detroit, Farmington, Huntington Woods, the city of Detroit, Hamtramck. They're asking for a letter of support. And so that's what this resolution is about. So council, what's your pleasure on item seven under the administration, the resolution to support House Bill forty-five oh three and forty-five oh four. We did a motion first, forty-five oh four for the expansion. So we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica. The Chair will offer support for this letter of support. You have questions, Madam Pro Tem?
Yeah, she, she's.
Madam Pro Tem?
I got two pages here.
Go right ahead.
Okay.
Okay. This is the first page, front page. This is the second page. This page also attached. I didn't really hear you. This page. It shouldn't even be in here. Because it reads, now therefore, here we saw that the city approved applying for Mr. Mike Neighborhood Grant. What does that have to do?
With the historical preservation.
Tell me where, which we're asked, ma'am, on the second page?
Second page. Third page. At the very top.
So what are we gonna do about it? No, no. So you either, either voted up or down, or asked for this to be removed. Yes, Mr. Biden, can you?
I don't, I don't even know where she's referencing.
She's on the third page, very top.
Excuse me, this resolution says be it further resolved. And then on the second page, it said now therefore be it resolved and it mentions the Mr. My Neighborhood Grant.
Okay.
Why is that in here?
You are, you are correct. It's like, uh.
What do you want to do?
So is your motion to exclude that, nor therefore be it resolved paragraph, that final sentence? Because I think it appears that last line was added on in error. That after the be it further resolved should have been the final.
So why don't you read this whole document for them? Would you?
Why don't you read?
No, no. Why don't, I mean, you pointed out.
You supported jewelry.
So why don't you read it?
It's supposed to be online and we voted for that.
Mm-hmm.
I was asking somebody to read some. You read it, child.
Okay.
Okay, listen. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Ms. Robinson, that your, your last statement, I couldn't hear you. Did you say?
I said it's supposed to be online, but we voted for all of our packages.
Oh, be online.
To be online for people to read it.
Okay.
So I'm thinking that we should table this until you get it right. I'll make a motion to table this item.
So with that motion being made, Ms. Manica, would you like to yield?
I yield.
Chair withdraws support. Go ahead and make that motion, Madam Pro Tem.
I did. I make a motion.
Please make a formal motion on the record.
Make a motion to table this item.
We have a motion on the floor from Council Pro Tem to table item seven. It has been seconded by Councilman Ashafi. Take a roll call on that.
Councilman Ashafi.
Ask your question, Ms. Martin, if you're gonna ask it.
Why are we table?
They can explain it to you.
Uh, my neighborhood grant.
So you, you could remove it.
We could, but we, I, I made a motion to table it. We can vote, yes or no.
Well, yeah, I know that.
Right.
You could also ask to amend it.
Why is everybody talking?
We can't make a motion to.
It's amazing how I, it's amazing how I have to wait my turn, but they, but they literally, they look at me.
I made a motion to table it.
Yep, so now that the motion is out there, this is typically where the dialogue takes place. And if I'm not mistaken, your colleague, Ms. Martin, had questions. And it would be respectful, like I always do, to allow a member of council to answer their questions. Ms. Martin, please go right ahead. I, I can be patient with you. Go ahead. You're still trying to understand what's happening right now. I can tell that. You're, you're just trying to figure out what's actually going on. Yep. So we have a motion on the floor to table this item made by Council Pro Tem, supported by Councilman Ashafi. If you would like to table the item, when we take the roll call, you can vote to table or not to table. We can also go back and vote to approve or to approve with the amendment of having that removed. That's how it works. It, it's, it's pretty much up to you, madam. So right now, we have a motion on the floor made by Council Pro Tem, supported by Councilman Ashafi. That's what they're voting for. You can say not to table. Yes, ma'am.
I got that. I can say A or yes.
Sure.
I got that.
Mm-hmm.
So what I'm asking is we're table it to bring it back to remove it?
Correct.
Oh, that's all I need to know.
So go ahead and call the roll. So we have a motion on the floor made by Council Pro Tem, uh, supported by Councilman Ashafi to table this resolution. This is resolution uh, forty-five oh three and forty-five oh four, where the Michigan legislature was asking for letters of support from cities with historic districts. The motion has been made to table this. So would you please go ahead and call the roll? Uh, no, I'm calling for the vote now. Go ahead, please.
I did email last week and again this week today. The missing of all of the historical sites in Highland Park. I have yet to get that. The building and the residential area. That's another reason why I'm taking it.
Thank you, ma'am. Go, go ahead and call the roll. The table.
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes, the table.
Councilwoman Martin.
No.
Councilwoman Manica.
No.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
To table it.
Council President Thomas.
No. So we are on item seven. Uh, right now, the Chair will entertain a motion on approving the resolution to support, to provide a letter of support for House Bill forty-five oh three and forty-five oh four. The floor is open for those who would like to make a motion. If you'd like to restate your motion, Ms. Manica, after yielding.
Yes, I moved.
Yep.
I moved to approve the resolution in support of House Bills four five zero three and four five oh four for the expansion of the Michigan State Historic Preservation Tax Credits established under Public Act three four three of two thousand and twenty with an amendment, I'm sorry, amendment or a removal of the line on page three. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the city appear approves applying for the M S H D A M I Neighborhood Grant.
Chair offers support. We have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution in support of House Bill forty-five oh, uh, forty-five oh three and forty-five oh four made by Councilwoman Manica with the removal of the statement. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the city approves applying for the Mission Neighborhood Grant. The support was offered by the Chair. Would you please call the roll on item seven?
Councilman Ashafi.
No.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item eight under recreation, the resolution to approve the gift of exercise equipment and swinging bench at Mumford. Glendale Park from state Detroit. We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi, second from Councilwoman Manica. Any questions, concerns, or dissent? Would you please take a roll call on item eight under recreation?
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
We're taking the vote, ma'am. We're taking the vote.
As much as you talk, I don't see no.
We're taking the vote.
As much as you talk, it's never.
We're.
Can you explain the ones and where we're asked for me, please?
Come on, sir.
Ms. Norlander, we're taking the vote.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
I have a question.
We're taking the vote, ma'am.
The people were asked that.
Council President Thomas.
Yes.
Wouldn't be approved by Highland Park Director of Parks and Recreation.
With a vote of, a majority vote of four, the motion carries. Uh, Ms. Norlander, now that the vote has been taken, would you please come up here? Thank you. She had a question for you. I don't think it's gonna change her outcome. Go ahead.
So where's the time?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Votes we take.
She had a question.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem answering the questions.
Sure.
Um, Madam Pro Tem? Madam Pro Tem, could you repeat?
Never mind, ma'am. We'll go ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So under citizen's participation, we're doing a hard two minutes tonight. Got a lovely timer. Um, two minutes. Once you step up to the podium, I'll start the timer. Once you state your name, I'll start your time. If you were to hear to your two minutes, I will not be stopping this buzzer until you stop talking. So please come on. Let's start with the individuals online. I typically omit that. I am doing multiple duties here. Mr. Blackwell, let me allow you to talk. Unmute yourself.
Hello, yes, my name is, uh, Charles Blackwell. I want to inform the city of Highland Park that Council President Jamal Thomas was charged by the Highland Park Police Department in two thousand and eighteen for failing to pay his taxes. Uh, secondly, the property taxes at Council President Jamal Thomas's house, the house that he resides in right now are delinquent and past due. And he should explain to the public as to how he can be the city council president and have past due, delinquent property taxes at his house. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else online? So people in the gallery, want to come up and line up to the podium? I'll set it at two minutes.
How you doing tonight?
Very good. Wait, and let me give you your name and I'll start your time. Go ahead.
My name is Jerome Boris. I live at two fifteen Waverly. I think you might be the person in, yeah, in that area. Um, this is my second time up here. The city, uh, it's, I bought, I got the house I live in, two fifteen. I've been living there since sixty-eight. And then we own the property next door, two eleven. It's just a vacant lot and it's three, three other properties, two more next to me that the city own. And I've tried to buy this property before, but the city telling me they ain't selling the property, but ain't nobody cutting the grass butting me. And, um, I'm trying to get the property again. There's two properties, just vacant lots. And, um, I'm gonna apply for it again, but I went, when I went to go apply, they tell me they got rid of the, the person that does this job, the, uh, building manager. That's what I was told downstairs. And, uh, the, the mayor called me today and told me that we have a treasurer. Even if I was to buy the property, I can't get nobody's money because the treasurer is AWOL.
That's a lie. So, so.
No, no, sir. That's, this is his time. This is his time. This is your time, sir. Don't let this man interrupt you. Mr. Bayla, Mr. Bayla, would you please, this, this is this man's time.
Our rule is, you want, our rule is, young man, you can't even pay the money because ain't nobody there to sit.
There you go. So you don't have to address any of us. This is your time, sir.
One, that's a lie. The treasurer is not AWOL. Two, you have the right to purchase no more than two properties at one time if they vacant lots. If it's three, you need to have a development plan.
Well, I want, I want, I want to buy two.
Yeah. You should be able to purchase them too.
Well, the city ain't selling it to me. That was the mayor told me today.
Yeah, well, that, that's her, that's, that is her department. I can't make her sell a land ticket.
I mean. This, this, this is a real dog and pony show.
It is.
You know, I'm ashamed.
It is.
I'm ashamed.
Agreed.
We have another citizen I would like to come up.
You don't want to shame. I'm ashamed along with you.
We have another citizen. Come on up, ma'am.
Hey.
I'll wait till you state your name and then we'll vote in.
I'm okay. My name is Carla Oliver. Um, can I see that time, please? So I make sure I'm, I stay on task. Um, yeah. Uh, my name is Carla Oliver. Um, one of the things that I notice is people approve things without looking at what's going on currently and what's in place right now. For example, we have an ordinance, um, in section ten forty that says that water is to be cut off and shut, uh, can be cut on at five dollars, cut back on at five dollars. However, we're allowing MCA to charge the residents fifty dollars. So where is the due diligence of the people that has been elected to do their jobs for things that's already in place, that's currently in place? But we're trying to get this ridiculous ordinance to come through when people aren't doing their jobs already. That's number one. I forgot what else I was gonna say, but that was a good one. Uh, so it's a lot of money. A, a, and, and I will say this, based off of that, if we can't even trust the elected officials in administration and the city council to do the right thing in regards to stuff like MCA charging fifty dollars, then how do we expect y'all to do the right thing by us with anything else y'all bring to the table? That's it. Because I don't remember anything else.
Did anyone else?
Hello, my name is Deanna Minor, and I was just looking over the agenda. I'm sorry I didn't get here earlier to, um, comment on the stuff. Do we have a vision for the, uh, graphics and a vision for the park renovation? Do we have something to show what it's gonna look like? Because I was listening to them uh, say some of the materials that they're gonna use, and I couldn't get a vision of what was this. Because out in the urban neighborhood, some of that stuff is no longer used for the children. Because it's more healthier stuff that can be used for the kids to have a, a good place to play. And I was just wondering, was there, uh, any pictures of what it's gonna look like, which I'll. any pictures of what it's gonna look like, which y'all voting on? Did they show y'all, uh?
I wanna see if I can find it in my. I'll do for my council affairs. We saw the park. Forgive me, I don't wanna take any of your time. I'm actually looking as you, as you, uh, talk. I'm actually looking for something.
Okay, and one last thing. Okay, I noticed here on the, uh, Michigan State Historic Tax Thing, are they gonna, when they say historic, is that something that's up to date or just dislabeled that way? Whereas we can't get no help with the housing and what the structure is like? Huh?
I don't understand the question.
With, when they said the Michigan State Historical, uh, Tax Credit, are they gonna help or are they just gonna go on the basic of the, the, the label?
So what they, oh, I'm sorry. I can answer you during council affairs, and I wanna take your time.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Doris Harris. So in March, I think, um, there, there were citizens that applied for the neighborhood grant to, uh, My Hope. And there are some recipients are being forced to enter into agreement, a mortgage against their home. And I don't understand how that can happen. So I don't know, who do I go to see? Who do we talk to? And the grant money was available. Um, it was, uh, the grant application said forty thousand dollars. So some, um, recipients has not been afforded that total amount. They only allowed them a specific amount and different. Everyone is not between the same. Some got the grant money and now the grant money is gone, it's about to end. And the remaining ones are being forced to do a mortgage against their home. The average person in Highland Park own their home, whether it's through, uh, death of a loved one or you've had it for years. And to have you to, uh, risk your home with a mortgage, that's not fair when you applied for a grant program, the grant program. And no one knows that. And another thing, I found out that our personal information is being held at someone's home and not in, in this city complex. Why is it that our personal information is at someone's home in Pontiac? Why it's not, uh, kept, uh, as confidential? Anybody can break into someone's home or someone have a disagreement with a loved one or grandchildren get a hold to your prop, uh, your information. And I think that's wrong to have taken our information, not, uh, kept it on a, uh, confidentiality. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's against HIPAA.
Okay, so that podium is empty, so we're gonna move into council affairs. We have a resolution? I'm sorry. Before we go into council affairs, citizens' comments is closed. We're gonna move to clerk. The clerk wanted to make an announcement.
There's nobody online?
That, that was the first person.
Okay, I got it.
Go ahead. Madam clerk?
There will be a community shred day on Saturday, October eighteenth, from twelve noon to three P M. For Highland Park residents only. Your I D will be checked. Uh, you can bring up to three boxes per person to be shredded, and it will take place in the municipal parking lot just on California. And we're asking that the traffic come from John R. down California. So again, there will be a community shred day sponsored by the Highland Park City Clerk on Saturday, October eighteenth, from twelve noon to three P M. For Highland Park residents only. You, I D must be provided. We will check I D, and you can bring up to three boxes of materials, documents to be shredded.
Thank you so much. So in council affairs, we added an additional item, item nine. That is this resolution that I'll read again to you. It says, whereas the Highland Park City Council unanimously voted for a moratorium of the enforcement of the rental ordinance until the council can review and make amendments for approximately ninety days on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. And whereas the Highland Park City Council held workshops to review the ordinance on June second, July seventh, and July twenty-first, we came to no verbal agreements or common understanding. And whereas various members of the Highland Park City Council submitted questions to the McKenna Group without adequate or timely responses or explanation. And whereas the City of Highland Park has not yet, yet fully reviewed the existing ordinance. And whereas the aggressive nature of the existing ordinance puts sudden and undue burden on many citizens of Highland Park, risking many livelihoods and duly owned assets. And whereas the upcoming fall and winter holiday season exacerbates the stress on families in the City of Highland Park. And whereas the recently read rental ordinance was not primarily authorized by a member of the Highland Park City Council for contravention to establish norms, now therefore be resolved that the Highland Park City Council affirms the countenance of, and further extends the moratorium on the rental ordinance for at least a hundred and twenty days until the council can properly review and make amendments with no less than four workshop agendas, agenda items dedicated to its review with the representative of the McKenna Group in attendance. This is the resolution that was provided to us by Ms. Martin?
Yes.
And so, uh, what we have right now is the floor open for somebody to make a motion to do something with this.
Motion to approve.
Uh, we have support. So we have a motion that was made to, to approve this resolution from Mr. Ashafi. Support was, do we have questions, concerns, or dissent?
I have questions.
Okay, so we have, the motion was made by Ashafi, was supported by Pro Tem. Go right ahead, but your questions, Ms. Manica.
We had four workshops. Then we had a reading. Then we talked about this last meeting. Am I correct?
Correct.
Correct. What was missing from last meeting?
You said what's missing from? Okay, so what was missing from the last meeting? One, we can't write a rental ordinance without assumptions. Checklists are missing. Timelines are missing. Payment plans are.
Your first thing was we can't write.
An ordinance without, on assumptions.
On assumptions, correct. And so what are the assumptions?
Well, that's when I was, Mr. President was saying that, oh, well, you would, we would assume that we can't write an ordinance on assumptions.
We would assume that what?
When we talked about, when I said timeline, and you were like, what timeline? What are you talking about? And I was like, inspections will be between the time of, and you were like, well, the assumption would be business hours. I'm like, we can't write an ordinance on assumptions.
No, miss, I'm sorry. Uh, forgive me for that. What I was saying is that the city is only open to do inspections during business. Uh, that's a statement.
I got that. But then I said if they open at nine, they're not doing inspections exactly at nine. It could be, we're doing inspections from ten to three. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, okay.
They still need to, they don't make reports for the inspections?
So you would say that you would like us to say in the ordinance that inspections can only be from ten to three? You'd like to specify that?
Specify, yeah. Specify a time. There needs to be timelines in here. Timelines, checklist.
Stop, stop. Let's start with the timelines. I'm only talking to Ms. Martin. It doesn't matter how much you holler, how much you scream. If you can't explain it, you should not be talking.
This is between the two of them.
So, Ms. Martin, when you say timeline, you want us to put in ten to three?
Just ten to three, Monday through Friday. There's another timeline I'm talking about when you talk about a lockout. There needs to be like three scheduled attempts before we sit up there and charge a lockout fee occurs. My next question is, the other thing that's missing is, is talking about if somebody is delinquent on their taxes or if they owe water. What I'm asking is what if there's a payment plan in place that includes them? If that does include them, that needs to be in the ordinance. That's missing. Um, section fourteen forty-eight twelve, um, that, there's no timeline in that one. Section fourteen forty-eight eleven, that needs to be rewritten. And then another timeline, will we say just ten days? Are we talking about ten business days? Or does it include Saturday and Sunday?
So.
Point of order, the motion is on the floor. We're talking about this document that you gave.
Right, but I'm answering her question, remember?
Yes, ma'am.
So, in that being said, let's just talk about other places. You telling me that they have resolutions that we're going to put timelines? You mentioned D T E earlier, and so I guarantee.
D T E or rental ordinance? I'm confused.
Yeah, I see it, that you gave an example of D T E earlier.
When, when solidarity was up here.
No. When you mentioned that you can get, um, people who can come to your home. Maybe you mentioned cable, my fault. You mentioned cable. Okay, so cable has a procedure. There are procedures and.
Right.
So procedures would not be in your resolution. Procedure should be something that, that company has or that department has.
I'm not talking about, I'm not, I'm not talking about a procedure. I'm just talking about a timeline. But the cable, that's when Mr. President brought up the cable.
Okay, that's null and void, period. Is that? Is that, that's a procedural thing that that company does. It's, it's not a resolution. It, it, the resolution is what we're gonna, I'm not gonna be monitoring ten to three. That is a procedural thing. So this company comes out and they have all these scheduled times. So if I call Ms. Martin and say, Ms. Martin, I wanna come inspect your home, right? I'm gonna ask you, what's the best time for you? Because the best times, the times that we have are between ten and twelve, twelve and one, or twelve and two.
Yeah, but that's the individual. We're talking about inspections, period. Between this time and this time, we're having inspections. And I did hold on. No, it's not. I also looked at Hamtramck's ordinance. They did put a time, Monday through Friday. Matter of fact, theirs is from nine to two.
I just think that's.
And then they do inspections every two years. They don't even do it once a year, like we're putting in our rental ordinance.
So you want it every two years?
That would be nice, yeah.
What is ours?
Once, we're, we're asking for once a year in this rental ordinance.
So that's fine. I can go with that.
Okay.
If that's what you want.
My next question, checklist.
What's the checklist for?
So ladies, I hate to interrupt you, but we're off of the order. Well, we're, right now, this is, um, we have this motion on the floor.
That's so, that's.
That's what she asked. She asked what's missing.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Keep going, keep going. We go, I'm gonna stay on, I'm gonna drive on the record.
That's what I asked. I said, when you ask me what's missing, I'm also asking, that was my next question. If somebody owes for water and taxes, my next question is if they're on a payment plan, does that include that, them? Because if it does, that's not in here. That's another thing that's missing.
That's water.
I see you, Mr. Malone.
And taxes, yes. That's in here.
That they can't do what, when they get their water and their tax?
If they owe. If they owe taxes.
What doesn't happen?
They don't get a, a C O C.
Because they owe to who?
The water and taxes.
And that's to who?
The city.
Okay, so if they owe to the city, why should they get a certificate?
I'm asking if they're on a payment plan.
They still, until they complete their payment?
I don't know, Ms. Manica.
I don't know if that would be. I don't know if that would be so.
Here's my other question.
Mr. Malone, hold on a second. Mr. Malone, can you answer that question right now? I'm, I wanna make sure we get clarification. Can you hear me, sir? I had you unmuted.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, the, the question that Ms. Manica and Ms. Martin are debating right now is whether or not if a person is on a payment plan, are they in good standing?
No, it says no, it's ordinance.
The ordinance says that they are delinquent.
Yes, it says no.
So delinquent and delinquent on a payment plan are separate.
Saying that they're not going to get a compliance.
So if you, so, Mr. Malone, if, if, uh, if a tenant or a commercial business is delinquent and they're on a payment plan, are they compliant or are they considered in default?
I'm talking about.
That would be a question, that would be a question for legal. Um, I just had to chime in fast for something that Councilwoman Martin just said. Um, so if you schedule, if you schedule.
You gotta be a little louder.
If you schedule an inspection, you give the time of when you're gonna be available.
I don't think.
I'm sorry. Could not hear you.
Go ahead, Mr. Malone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so when you schedule your appointment with the building inspector for him to inspect your property, you set the time for that. If you're not gonna make the appointment, I don't see why we would have to come out three different times before a lockout fee. If you aren't gonna be on, I would think that you will call ahead and say, hey, I got a family emergency. Can we reschedule this? That's different versus me or the building inspector coming out, and you're not there and you didn't notify us for something. And I'm a hundred percent sure that D T E and Comcast does the same thing.
No, they don't do a lockout if you don't, if you don't, if you don't sit up there and see D T E, they just don't cut you on. That's just how simple that is. But we're not even, we're not even D T E. Thank God. Um.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve this resolution. That we haven't voted on this resolution yet. No, we didn't. Did you, do you, do you remember calling the roll, Madam clerk? Thank you very much. So you had your question. So right now, I wanna just bring us back to where we are. We had a motion that was made by Council Pro Tem. I'm sorry, by Councilman Ashafi.
I thought it stopped with Manica.
Supported. No, it started, so the motion was made by Councilman Ashafi. It was supported by Council Pro Tem Robinson. You had questions. You and Ms. Manica exchanged a dialogue. Right now, we're at a point where we're ready to call to roll on this. Are you, this is your, this is your resolution. Are you ready to call to roll on it? Because we can just get this over with and just call to roll. We can vote it up or down. We don't have to discuss it. This is your resolution. This is the resolution for this moratorium. What are we gonna do, ladies and gentlemen? Madam clerk, please call to roll on the resolution that was provided to us.
We called the motion? Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes, for the moratorium.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes, for the moratorium.
Councilwoman Manica? Council? Council Pro Tem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
No, motion carries. Thank you very much. So I am going to start at the top. You sure you want to do that, Ms. Manica? You absolutely sure?
Positive. He's asking, did I want to go first?
You, you told him. Okay, so Ms. Manica, go ahead. Turn around, look at this. We, we still gonna be friends after this five minutes, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, go for it.
What I want to talk about is political distractions. And so what happens in our city an awful lot is that we get distracted by so many small minute things that can be handled as we move in progress along. So that's what the word amendment does. It allows you to amend certain things even after they've been approved. But instead, we stay on them consistently, three, four, five weeks. And then we hear that, oh, we're not doing our job because we haven't gotten to or moved on to another ordinance or another resolution or another situation. But we've been on the same one for a total of two months. And so you cannot move forward that way. You cannot progress that way. And we don't understand those political distractions. So I'm gonna give you an example of some political distractions, and that's your personal, and I'm gonna just give you the titles. That's your personal and political conflicts. That's your partisan agendas, media attention or social media debates, elections and campaign pressures, special interest influence. Administrative distractions is your bureaucracy, your red tape, mismanagement of staff, inefficient communication, staff turnover, and unclear roles or priorities. Financial distractions is budget crisis, grant chases, unexpected cost of lawsuits, vendor or contract disputes, community and publicly re, I'm sorry, public relation distractions, vocal minority groups, misinformation or rumors, public outrage cycles, pressure to respond quickly, negative pressure coverage. Your technology distractions is overrelevance on tech solutions, cybersecurity, data overload. Personal and internal distractions, burnout and stress, too many meetings, competing priorities across departments or initiatives, lack of delegation. And then city leaders can reduce them by establishing clear priorities and vision, working together, communication protocols, time limited meetings, and policy and oversight, performance metrics. Which we don't get a chance to operate in any of those met, in those ways. But we do operate in all the distractions that I said, because we come in here and we just go over and over and over again. So with that being said, I do have a question for Mr. Bosnick. Mr. Bosnick, can you give me an update, please, of our treasurer situation?
We're currently litigating with the treasurer at the moment, so, uh, any update would be in a written memo form uh, prepared by the attorney, who's handling that litigation.
Okay, so is there any?
I will, uh, I will have an update for you shortly. I'm gonna reach out to him and I'll indicate to him that council would like a memo on the current status of litigation.
Okay, cuz, so I don't know if anyone, I don't think is here from administration can answer that because I have residents that are asking, when they come, there's no one at the window. No one at the window is dark. And also, I think there is a list, I was, a, a little note that says there's some business hours. Well, the concern is business hours is between what, nine and five or nine and four thirty? So that is a question that several residents have asked, how are they to deal with the things that they need to handle? Even that, even a rental ordinance, which is gonna revert back to the original rental ordinance, actually. So if they had to pay something, who would they pay it to? So again, here we are again with distractions that nobody wants to acknowledge. Those are all distractions. When, when government cannot operate in the way it needs to operate, that is a distraction. When you cannot pass a, a resolution or anything at some certain point, and we just keep prolonging it. Mind you, the rules going forward says, I can amend. I can bring a motion to amend anything that we have done. So that is a process. And if we just follow the process, we might be able to get through more than two ordinance before this is over with.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Ashafi, the floor is yours for five minutes.
Well, allow me to be quick there, boss. Um, ladies and gentlemen, you saw here tonight what's going on. We are in a sea. We are being drowned by househands. They even asked Master if they could go first. Did you see that? Did you see the favorites? Okay? These people could care less about your well-being. This ordinance is so intrusive, they should be ashamed to even speak it to you. That's why they only read it once. When the rules clearly state it needs to be read twice until the record, they only read it once. Okay, understand what you're dealing with here. The objective is to get rid of you. You're the undesirables. This ordinance gives them the right to come into your home and do whatever the hell they see fit to do, and there's nothing you can do about it. Not only that, I, I will say this to Councilwoman Martin about something else that's missing. The right to appeal, the right to grievance. Where's the safeguards for the residents? Where's the r- r- residents' rights to say, hey, I'm being mismanaged here by the code enforcement officer? What's my option of grievance and appeal? That's not in the code. That's not in the ordinance. They don't want you to have a right of appeal. They want your ass that's out. And the more leeway you give them, the worse it's gonna get. I keep telling you, we're being surrounded and drowned in this black community by househands. Me, myself, I enjoy being a, a field hand. I'm free. I belong to nobody. Now, you know the other word that I would love to use, but you know we can't do that. That would be out of line, right? Okay, but we're drowning in them househands, the househands, both of them. Because everything, I don't.
So we gonna stop there, because one, one, you're not going to. No, I am so tired of Mr. Ashafi and his thingy.
Ms. Manica, please. Ms. Manica, please.
Everything positive.
Ms. Manica, please.
Everything positive that we try to do. Everything positive we try to do.
No, he's not going to.
They vote against it.
Please, please, ma'am.
Everything positive we try to do for this city, they vote against it. This is my five minutes. Everything positive we try to do for this city, they vote against it. You have never seen them vote in your interest. Name their time. Name their time. Even when they knew it was wrong, they still voted in the opposite direction. That's where they're at. And they need to be reminded of their betrayal on election day. And you have a lovely day, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Martin, Ms. Martin.
No, Ms. Manica, please don't. Please don't. I know, I know. Oh, the proclamation. I'll let you do the proclamation before me.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Martin. Please take your five minutes.
Okay. It was talking about, mentioned political distractions. My thing is, whose job is it to write the ordinance? It's our job. And it's our job to write the ordinance until we get that correct. There's too much that's missing in that rental ordinance. There's way too much. There's way too many things. It's unclear. And there should be no assumptions in that rental ordinance. So my thing is, until we get it amended and corrected, until then, it's a no for me. That's where I'm at. Now, with that being said, I am going to say thank you so much for the, those of you who came out and stayed. I appreciate you. Some of you, it's been a while since I've seen you. Welcome. Happy to be here, that you guys are here. And I'm gonna go ahead and I'm turning it back over to Manica?
We're gonna have it to my.
Ms. Robinson.
Okay.
Okay.
Turn it over to.
Madam Pro Tem.
Robin Tem. Believe me, everybody.
Is it on?
No. I want to thank my pastor. This is something I was like, I know that leads you here. I want. First, I want to state for the record that the president did not allow me to ask questions for clarity on item eight in regards to the fifth, whereas giving the rec. Department additional, um, information for improvements. And I also want that to be read into the minutes, because I don't want to say that I would know.
Would you read that into the minutes, Madam Clerk? Would you mention that in the minutes?
Also wanted to talk about the reason I tabled the tax thing is because who gets the tax credits? I never got any information on the sites of the historical buildings and places and streets in Highland Park. Um, and until we get that, uh, we don't, we can't keep saying yes to stuff. If we don't have the information to vote right on it. Because it makes no sense. God bless y'all. That's all I got.
Thank you, ma'am. Prior to doing my council affairs, uh, uh, Councilwoman Manica took the liberty of preparing a proclamation for the street deck, uh, the street dedication this past week. At this point, Ms. Manica, you still got some steam in you? You wanna?
I have a whole lot, but I'm gonna hold it.
I know, I know, I know.
City of Highland Park, Michigan proclamation honoring the legacy and street naming of Martha G. Scott. Whereas the city of Highland Park, Michigan takes pride in honoring distinguished leaders who visioned service and commitment have strengthened our community and inspired generations. And whereas Martha G. Scott began her historic career in public service as a trailblazer in the city of Highland Park, serving with distinction as both a city council member and a first woman elected mayor of Highland Park, breaking barriers and open doors for women in leadership throughout the state of Michigan. And whereas her legacy of service extended to Michigan House of Representatives, where she advocated tirelessly for the residents of her district, champion issues of equality, equity, education, and opportunity. And whereas, as a Michigan State Senator, Martha G. Scott continued her unwavering dedication to public service, ensuring the voices of Highland Park and neighboring communities were heard in enhancing shaping policy that uplifted working families and strengthened community. And whereas, in her role as a Wayne County Commissioner, she continued her lifetime commitment to public service, building bridges between communities, supporting vital programs, and ensuring resources reach those most in need. And whereas Martha G. Scott has served as a mentor, role model, and trailblazer for countless women and men in public service, inviting, bodying the values of integrity, perseverance, and compassion that define true leadership. And whereas the city of Highland Park wishes to honor her lifelong dedication and immeasurable contribution by designating a city street in her name, ensuring that her legacy will endure and inspire future generations. Now, therefore, it be it resolved that the Highland Park City Council does hereby proclaim recognition and celebration of the Honorable Martha G. Scott on historic occasion on the street naming in her honor. Be it further resolved, this is the proclamation be entered into the official records of the city of Highland Park as a permanent testament to her extraordinary legacy of leadership, service, and dedication to the people of Highland Park, Wayne County, and the state of Michigan. In witness whereof, the Highland Park City Council has caused this proclamation to be issued. It was issued on the twenty-seventh day of September, two thousand and twenty-five. It was signed by all council members with the exception of Mr. Ashafi.
Okay, so those of you who are wondering, Madam Pro Tem made the motion to have the street dedication for Martha G. Scott. And Ms. Manica took the liberty of preparing the pla- proclamation. This was the only opportunity that we had to read it again. The dedication was on the twenty-seventh of the month. Our first meeting since then was today, which is why we wanted to make sure that it could be read into the record. I thank both of those ladies for their work and for their dedication to the city. Okay, so I'm gonna sit this for five minutes for myself, and I'm gonna start the timer. So today, I got the results back from my assessment test. For those of you who don't know, I'm a science teacher. I teach chemistry and environmental science in a public school system. Um, the third of October was the beginning of the, what, October first was the beginning of the fiscal year, and this was the reporting year for literacy for our students. So I got my results back today, and I mentioned this in the workshop for those of you who was, were here. Um, the findings were so alarming that it is the only thing I wanted to talk about during council affairs today. What I uncovered from my students, they're eleventh grade students, sixteen, seventeen, some of them eighteen years old, is that less than one in three of those children can read. And it's important to us because very rarely are children ever mentioned in this room. One in three of our children are reading at grade level. I'm gonna say it again, and we need to be terrified. One in three of our seventeen-year-olds are reading at grade level. And so what I'm asking the community to do is, if you don't have books at your home, if you're not sitting down and talking to the young people in your family, if you're not engaging them in reading actual books and magazines, it's a critical issue for us. We're not gonna have to worry about gentrification at all. What we're gonna have to worry about is indentured servitude. These young people, these brilliant, bright young people cannot read and write. I had a young man graduating last year, a senior in high school. I asked him to read a paragraph. He could not adequately read the paragraph. It should be alarming. If I told you that forty-seven percent of the people in the city of Detroit were gonna die of heart failure, everybody would start to exercise, you would cut your red meat, you would go see your doctor, you would be alarmed. But if I told you that forty-seven percent of the adults in southeastern Michigan are functionally illiterate, you should equally be alarmed. As the science teacher at the school, it's my job to do phenomenon recognition and also to bring the data to my colleagues. The study that's on the screen right now was produced by Wayne State University in two thousand and twenty-four. It says an alarming literacy rate in one of Detroit's largest cities. What can be done for the city of Detroit? The aim of this study, it says regarding a major cultural industrial center, Detroit is known for its contribution to art, architecture, design, and music, which led to its Motown nickname in addition to its ties to the birth of the auto industry, which brought it to the nickname the Motor City. Despite several higher learning institutions in a national research university, Detroit has been facing a continued decline in the adult literacy rates. That amount of forty-seven percent, meaning that half the city's population are functionally illiterate. Low literacy skills can profoundly affect adults' ability to fully participate in daily activities and contribute to the world around them. Based on statistical data corroborated with historical events and socioeconomic factors, the paper discusses the root causes that have led to Detroit's having one of the lowest literacy rates in the United States. Various efforts aimed to remedy the situation are highlighted along with the entities involved in this ongoing endeavor. Just a second. I want to show you under the conclusions. Under conclusions, the finding of the P I A H study demonstrated that income levels are strongly related to literacy. The average annual income for adults who reach the minimum level of proficiency in literacy, level three is nearly sixty-three thousand dollars a year, significantly higher than the average of almost forty-eight thousand earned by adults who score just below proficiency at level two. And much higher than those at lower levels of literacy, between zero and one, whose annual average earnings are just around thirty-four thousand dollars a year. As mentioned, the median household income in the city of Detroit and Highland Park is about thirty-four thousand dollars. Thus placing Detroit at the very bottom of the income scale nationwide. Illiteracy refers to the inability to read and write, but more accurately encompasses the comprehension evaluation and utilization of information, which is why people describe many different types of information literacy, such as health, financial, and legal. Illiteracy is typically measured according to the inability to comprehend a short, simple statement. A short, simple statement, ladies and gentlemen, of everyday life. UNESCO says, basic literacy represents the foundation of information literacy. Functional literacy is defined as the ability to read and comprehend relatively short text and understand basic vocabulary. Low literacy profoundly affects adults' ability to participate in day-to-day activities. And today, in this room, we witness the world of the future. If less than three in ten children can read, imagine a world where literacy is the common, is the norm. As Ms. Manica stated, we have difficulty reading and interpreting the documents in front of us. You should be alarmed. You should be terrified. We are going to post reconstruction literacy data. Having concluded all business related to the city of Highland Park, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.